Since they have also done payroll too. So I brought it, but we've also gotten in money in between that time too that I mentioned to you. So it's kind of like. Um, I just need, we gotta work out something with everything going on so you guys can get up there. Um, sign those, um, invoices and get that, so I can get those bills out on time. Right now there shouldn't be, I think I gave the last one to Jim, there shouldn't be any, um, anything up there, but I have some I just got today, so there will be some more before the end of this week. Where you guys decide. I don't know how you want to work to get in the building with everything going on with your access is. I know like Jim had said to me and I have so fear that alarm system.
Check it out.
I feared it too. I went in there to pray because a couple of times myself, I hate for it to go off on me when I'm in there. So I don't want to go in after hours.
I didn't want a meeting with Andy before our meeting. People show up with a smile, don't they? Is it the end of the shift? Is it early in the shift? Well, anybody till we get, everybody gets comfortable. I, I'm willing to come and visit, stay late, early. Come on Saturday or Sunday if you guys feel uncomfortable by that alarm. I'll do anything I can to help you guys get in there and do those, those checks. Of course, we are, you know, we're all there from eight thirty to four thirty Monday through Friday. Um, so, but that's during the day. And so I'm serious. I'll, I'll help you guys any way we can to where everybody gets comfortable.
So if you get an alarm call, just text to say is that you Jim? Which one are you there?
Um, I think other than that, I'm just trying to get, trying to get my stuff together over there. I told you guys in the work session where I'm at. As far as that, as far as the, uh, I think we're, um, there's no real issues. I think we're kind of catching on to what we need to have done. We're all kind of working together to get these bills done, yeah.
You're not in chief week tomorrow at four o'clock, so there is a carpet cleaning company coming in to, to do the tile and the carpet tomorrow afternoon. So I'll, we meet, they're gonna start working. Cause there's been some concern about when was the last time the place was cleaned, the bathroom floors and the whole bit. And it was Corona. Yeah, I just don't want to risk it for COVID. I, I just don't want to risk it. I, we gotta have it facility cleaned. And now we've done the bulk of all of our moving construction. Only thing left is the tile, the county has to put in new ceiling tiles, you know, in the facility for some of the replacement and the discolor. That, that'll come soon, but so, so I just want, I want the personal people to tell you thank you. And Chief, thanks for working on this movement and paying bills and doing all that at the same time is a very hard thing to do. And I thank everybody, including your staff and Tony and, and anyone that helped us move. And it's, it was, it was a huge task.
The fire department was a great help for goodness me, well, they didn't move like crazy.
We were very happy and we had very little furniture that got, uh, treated unfriendly.
Are we meet here now?
Can we meet here tomorrow? Just so we don't have the hat had over there. I didn't know what your records are.
I'm, I'm pretty sure, yeah, I think we did over the phone.
Yeah, I think we got it. Let's meet here. Okay.
It's clear.
Thank you Tracy.
Other than that, unless you guys have questions for me.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve the fiscal officers' report, impaling bills, invoices, appropriations, warrants.
I second the motion.
We have a motion on the floor to accept the fiscal officer's report. Any questions? We have a roll call please Tracy.
Tracy McLaughlin?
Yes.
Tracy McGuire?
Yes.
Tracy Mann?
Yes.
Fiscal officer's report is accepted. Okay, uh, resolutions for consideration. We have a resolution, start off with number twenty, two O dash zero three three. Jefferson Township Board Trustees adopted a resolution to control, control noise levels and regulations in Jefferson Township. Uh, we had one of these, I thought we had one of these out, is this a review? Do you know Steve, did we have an, did we have an?
We had, we had, we had something that we thought was a valid document.
Oh, okay.
And we realized like, as Captain Flaggett asked us to go through these resolutions, that his people can or can't enforce. We've come across this one, so, uh, Tony, uh, you've done a lot of work on this. Uh, can you elaborate to them a little bit of where, where you're, where you've come up with this document?
I just checked other townships to see what they did because it talked in our zoning code about decimal levels and blah, blah, blah. No one has those tools to say, you know, yeah, it's above the decimal levels. So I checked with, uh, other townships, uh, higher revised code, it's in the higher revised code. And that's pretty much what we adopted in the, in the, uh, in the policy. And it talks about, I can't remember off the top of my head, but it talks about, uh, if it disturbs you within such and such hours. And you can hear it within twenty-five feet. So it does give them something to enforce because they don't have to stand out there with some gauge to, it's more of a judgment call, I would think, you know? So that would give them some, some authority to enforce it.
So barking dogs, stereos.
Barking, if, if you read the thing, it talks about everything from barking dogs to loud music to jackhammers to steam engines to steam whistles. I mean, everything is listed in, uh, the higher revised code. I mean, it's.
Birds, okay.
Yeah, I mean, again, if you read all that, everything is pretty much covered. It's like any other.
Did chickens fall into birds?
Any other, any, any code has to be written that way or it's not as workable.
Right. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution two O dash three three.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to adopt resolution two O dash zero three three. Any questions? We have a roll call vote please Tracy.
Tracy McLaughlin?
Yes.
Tracy McGuire?
Yes.
Tracy Mann?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Captain Flag, we'll get what you, uh, wrote down as well.
There's a sign on the back of this?
We're getting ready to summon once as you know, and it's very important that your deputies have the power of this room.
So that's a minor misdemeanor or something?
I read all of it.
Okay, so the next resolution, um, it is, uh, resolution number two O dash zero three four. This is the one with the vacuum services. Are we going to put this out, uh, what are we going to do with this guys?
You voted, averted, plug in the contractor at the building bid, right table of trees.
That's right.
What's the name of the vendor Steve?
R, uh, R F, RFP Vacuum Truck and Store Mark Cleanout Services. Champion Cleaning Services Incorporated, state company.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty dash zero three four. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees do hereby agree to enter into a contract with Champion to vacuum, for vacuum services for various infrastructure located in Jefferson Township.
I second the motion.
We have a motion on the floor, uh, resolution zero, uh, two O dash zero three four. Uh, any questions? We have a, uh, roll call vote please Tracy.
Tracy McLaughlin?
Yes.
Tracy McGuire?
Yes.
Tracy Mann?
Yes.
Motion is adopted. Resolution is adopted. Okay, so the next one was done earlier. Thirty-five, so we'll go to number thirty-six. And I believe that one we're gonna put back out to bid again. Is that right guys?
Yeah, Mr. President, I make a motion that we table this, write down and put it back out for RFP.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to table resolution two O dash zero three six. Will you look on a table?
That's good.
All right, vote please Tracy.
Tracy McLaughlin?
Yes.
Tracy McGuire?
Yes.
Tracy Mann?
Yes.
Motion's tabled.
Plus, you won't be able to advertise our new RFP? Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Okay, so, uh, we have a resolution, resolution number two O dash zero three seven. The Jefferson Township Board Trustees agreed to have all expenses for operating both the Chevrolet Blazer and the Ford Ranger pickup truck as a fifty-fifty split between the road and the general funds starting June first of twenty twenty.
Move to adopt resolution number twenty dash zero three seven.
Second. We have a motion on the floor to adopt resolution two O dash zero three seven. Any questions? Good. Tracy, can we have a roll call vote please?
Tracy McLaughlin?
Yes.
Tracy McGuire?
Yes.
Tracy Mann?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, last resolution on the list, resolution number two O dash zero three eight. Authorization, authorization given to the fire chief to enter into a three-year contract with waste management to reduce the cost of garbage removal by fifty percent per month for the next three years.
That's twenty dash zero three eight?
Yes.
Mr. President, move to adopt resolution number twenty dash zero three eight.
Second. We have a motion on the floor to adopt resolution two O dash zero three eight. Any questions? Good. Uh, Ms. Tracy, can we have a roll call vote please?
Tracy McLaughlin?
Yes.
Tracy McGuire?
Yes.
Tracy Mann?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, so that.
Mr. President, uh, we talked about this in the work session. Let's do a, I propose that we do a simple resolution to authorize the township administrator to authorize a RFP for call and repairs on Calumet Drive. And call it resolution number twenty dash zero thirty-nine. So all we're doing is putting it out to bid. RFPs.
So we're gonna vote on it, sign it, whatever they, but we just did that one. Just I'll second, you made a motion, I'll second it. So we have a motion on the floor to adopt resolution, uh, number two O dash zero three nine. It gives the township administrator Steve Wolf the, uh, authorization to make up an RFP for work on Cal, on Calumet Lane for the culvert repair, uh, there in front of the Calumet Center, on Calumet Lane. We have the vote. Any questions? We have a roll call vote please Tracy.
Uh, Tracy McLaughlin?
Yes.
Tracy McGuire?
Yes.
Tracy Mann?
Yes.
Good. Motion passes. Captain Jim? Okay, so that is departmental reports. Uh, Sheriff's Department is first. Uh, we have Wolf, we got, you guys mistake for April.
Well, that was just in case they weren't able to make it. We're gonna give a floor, I defer the floor to Captain Flag.
Okay, yes sir.
Evening everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. For April, we were at five hundred forty-nine calls for service, nine felony arrests, eight misdemeanors, conducted forty-two traffic stops, issued thirteen citations. I'm gonna jump down to domestic violence. We're coming in at ten for the month of April. We feared we might see an increase there. We're not doing too bad. Don't be complaints, we had three.
Why do you think you have, you have like eight homes?
Everybody's staying home, but everybody seems to, for the most part, you know, be doing okay with it. We're just not getting a lot of, uh, a lot of issues out of it, not, at least not a lot of calls on issues at home, so. Um, that's, that's one we've kind of been watching closely since the beginning. We feared that might be an uptick, but we're not seeing a drop.
Because of that?
Uh, we're, we're down, uh, fifty-six percent over twenty nineteen. So, um, you know, we're, we, we still got things going on. It's just they are, we are seeing decreases in most places. The one area where we do have an increase is within the mental health related calls. So we are, we are fielding a lot of those. We've initiated a procedure where we're, we're completing what's called a field interview. When we go out on something like that and we sense that somebody may be in, uh, need of additional help and we're referring them for, to, to some of the available resources in the mental health community to, to kind of follow up on, check up on, um, just to kind of keep an eye on that. Uh, neighbor disputes, we were at five. Um, we've had nineteen police officer requests, a lot of that's custody exchanges and things of that nature. Uh, and we've conducted seventeen welfare checks over the month of April. As I said, crimes down fifty percent, fifty-six percent over twenty nineteen, fourteen percent over twenty eighteen. We had one overdose, uh, in April, um, which is down one from twenty nineteen. Fifteen mental health suicide related calls, April twenty twenty, uh, compared to two in twenty nineteen, so those were up quite a bit. Decrease in DV calls from twenty nineteen, we went from fourteen to eight, or fourteen to ten. Uh, assaults were down from five in twenty nineteen to two in twenty twenty, so a lot of things just dropping there and, you know, we're not, we're just not having a lot of trouble with township right now. Uh, West Third, US thirty-five areas and the, the, the areas off the corridor state route forth, where we do continue to see the bulk of our calls for service. On April sixteenth, First Watch crews, Jefferson crews responded to a stabbing that occurred on Paul Tuckett. Uh, it ended up being one of the domestic complications that we had. One subject was arrested and the other one was taken to the hospital with non-life threatening injuries. On the seventeenth, Third Watch Jefferson crews responded to a hit and run, not a hop and run, crash in the area of Third Street and US thirty-five. Um, that's the one that resulted in the light pole being knocked down out back here. That investigation revealed that the suspect, uh, left the roadway, struck a tree, struck the light pole. That caused a crash when the pole fell over US thirty-five and two cars collided into that. Um, the suspect then continued, ended up in, in another crash in the twelve hundred block of Infirmary Road. Um, he was located at a residence down in that area after leaving the vehicle on foot. That crash scene resulted in another crash of a car that was northbound. So, um, created quite a mess. Uh, but once, once we located that individual, he alleged that he was being pursued and shot at by two other vehicles. Um, that started somewhere down here in the area, the Marathon Station, went down to Casanos and then came back this way. Uh, that, that claim was later disproved through, uh, videos, um, that were obtained through ODOT and, uh, his, his written statement later. So, um, being investigated as a hit and run at this point. On April twenty-second, twenty twenty-third, watch Jefferson, Jefferson crews spotted a, entered stolen vehicle in the Liberty Heights area. It was a stolen, entered out of Dayton. They attempted to initiate a felony stop, the vehicle refused to stop and eventually fled from deputies. Uh, a short time later, or the crash called in on Old Road. Deputies responded and discovered it was the same stolen vehicle that had fled from the attempted stop. A perimeter was established in around the wooded area and the search was conducted that led to the apprehension of two juveniles that had been in the vehicle. On April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-third, watch crews responded to an endangered, endangered missing juvenile. Um, we, we probably saw some of it, but we disseminated information through the local media, the phone tree calling, uh, program, um, MCSO social media and throughout the community. That subject was spotted by a Second Watch Jefferson crew in an area, a wooded area along Old Road where he was known to frequent. Uh, the deputy just happened to be cruising through there checking the area for him and just happened to be there at the same time that he emerged from the wooded area. So they, they snagged him up and returned him to safety and, uh, we canceled all the subsequent bolos and such. Um, no roadways cleaned up in Jefferson during April. We were the temporary suspension of inmate work programs. Um, they are having dialogue of moving toward getting those programs back and running. It'll, it'll be a little bit of a process when they decide to go that way because they'll have to start resentencing people with the stop program, which is where we get our inmates. Right now that, uh, building has been vacated for the social distancing and they're not sentencing people there right now. But once they start getting that process back in place, late May, first half of June, maybe we, we will see that program back in, uh, action and we'll get, uh, some workers back out here cleaning. Couple of things that are not in the report, but, uh, just to let you know, we are moving forward with the camera purchase. The POs are, um, going through the approval process at the county. Um, they are available for order as of now. They were, um, rebranding, coming out and introducing new models of those cameras. So it was, uh, they weren't available until April and then this kind of pushed it back a little bit, but as of last week, they are now available for purchase. So we're getting the PO through on that and the updated signage through Dayton Stencils. Dayton Stencils halted operation, so we're in a holding pattern on that one, but once they open back up, we'll, we'll push forward with that. And, uh, that's all I have. Anything for me?
I have a question for you Captain.
Yes sir.
Uh, we, we, myself and Joe Combs cleaned up a dumping in the S curve in Olbrun. And we continued it. That's our second dumping.
Alley dumping or the household trash dumping?
Household trash dumping.
Okay, yes, I saw that one.
So we found bills and pill bottles from an address over on Blairwood. My question to you is if that happens to us, do we call the environmental crimes officer and say, do a, a small investigation to see if it came from that particular address? Or is it just somebody cleaning out the house and dumping? How do you want us as a township to proceed? We, we, we didn't know if that was good evidence or not.
I actually saw that one and she was going to go check it out, but you guys must have cleaned it up in the meantime.
Right. I have pictures and I, I still have the power bill and a, and a, and a pill bottle there. That I could share with you on that particular dumping.
Yeah, go ahead and share it with us and then we will, uh, you know, see what we can do. But a lot of times what these dumping complaints end up being is you, you've got a rental property, um, you know, that has been vacated. And, and then the landlord.
Somebody paid them to go.
Hire somebody to go clean out that property. And then instead of taking that stuff to the dump like they're contracted to do, they go find something in the pocket for change. So we can, uh, you know, we can work backwards. Sometimes it works out, sometimes it doesn't.
Okay. We'll do everything we can if we ever find anywhere like that. Thank you.
Okay, uh, next we have the zoning department.
John's report, uh, no zoning certificates were issued from March. BZA did not meet in March or April. Uh, zoning certificates issued in April, fifty-one hundred Redford Drive, uh, this was to put up a fence. Twenty-five fourteen Liberty Ellerton, uh, was another fence permit. Twenty-seven forty-seven Southers Home, West Carlton Road, uh, this was a shed permit. And twenty-four sixty-six West Third issued a zoning certificate to a room addition. And then seventy-seven twenty-seven Dayton Department Hill Road. Uh, issued a permit for a swimming pool and a second permit for the construction of two decks. Uh, Mr. Colkin states he participated in the move to get settled in Calumet Lane. And he has made great strides combining old zoning files, more than ten years old, with the newer files. It's all I have, other than, was there an email that he announced, uh, BZA meeting for Roush?
Yes.
What's the date?
Twenty-first.
So the date is May the twenty-first.
Yeah, it was that time.
It's gonna be Thursday.
It'll be here.
He also gave me all the checks for all of them already. All those certificates.
That's all he has.
Okay, uh, Mr. Gene Lutz there, Fire Department place?
Good evening, your buddy.
Good evening.
Uh, for the fire department, we're very busy.
I don't know why.
What's that?
I don't know why.
Been, uh, giving you guys the updates every day after, uh, line with the line and, uh, snacking with Dr. Ackman. Sent out the information to keep you updated what's going on. Uh, we've been paying bills, attending multiple county chief meetings. We've been doing it by Zoom. That's who we use, our chief meetings, and same way with RDC, uh, the dispatch center. We attended, uh, some other chief meetings as well for, we've had some issues with some of the, being unable to get some of the supplies that we've gotten or to attain, so we've been working on a process for that. We also, uh, put that update from the, the ICS two oh eight on our Facebook as well. They're going out on the show this apartment. Uh, we helped with straightening up, uh, the Calumet Center and getting it ready for the move. Mr. Wolf called me and said, hey, you know, we're gonna move tomorrow or the next couple of days. Can you give us a hand? We put a text out and the next day we had twelve people here ready to help move the, uh, you guys over to the Calumet Center. Uh, crews moved furniture from fifty-nine and sixty-one to here to sixty. Uh, we've, uh, if you walk through the other side, you'll see there's, uh, we moved all of our offices, the, the town chiefs and I, over to here. All those offices have been, uh, all the holes been sealed, sanded down, all the carpeting even in here has been cleaned. Uh, they've been painted. We're working on the shift commander's, uh, office. The floor just got laid in there. We'll be putting the, the bed and the rest of his, his desk and stuff in there for them. Training officer, we just brought the carpeting up from his floor, yeah, today. Two dorms down here, one's already got the, the, the new floor and put in. Uh, tomorrow we'll start and get the, the second one tomorrow. So there's a lot of stuff going on here, uh, that we've been working on, trying to get everything ready to go, uh, to get this place up and running, um, for the fire department. Uh, there is, uh, right now we've got twenty-five hundred dollars invested into this place with new flooring, paint, ceiling, uh, or ceiling for the walls. I bought some new, uh, the beds, replacing the beds that we have in the dorms, those mattresses, if you, they're spring mattresses. You touch them like this, they'll shrink down. So I stared with clear from that and went with, uh, eight inch foam mattress, which gives you a better, uh, comfort for sleeping in nighttime for these guys and you won't destroy that, uh, that mattress quick. And then we also have, uh, beds on order, your Nitrons, they'll hold thirty-six hundred pounds. They have fourteen inch, uh, storage underneath, so they'll be able to put their bedding underneath you when they come in and out of, out of, uh, shift. Unfortunately, our crews here, they hotbed it, which is hotbedy means is one leaves the, in the morning, the next person takes over, it just keeps the cycle going. So our beds are used constantly, so you can see the wear and tear on the beds that we have with, uh, we've been replacing. Got a working fire on forty-eight forty-eight Vanguard. I'll just leave it as it's under investigation. That's as far as I'll go with that right now. I know the cops took some stuff out of there the other day. Some guns and, and paraphernalia that shouldn't have been in the house. But right now, we'll leave it as under investigation. I'm working with the insurance companies to investigate her on that. And we're gonna try to get the, the, uh, demo fund for that one and, and other one as well. So, uh, as soon as we get that, I'll forward it to Tracy. Uh, working with Buckeye, we got all, we put our new computers in here at the station, also Emery, you know, we've got new phones throughout the building. Cutting, you know, with understation maintenance, we've cut the grass numerous times at all three stations. Uh, we talked about repairing holes in the walls. EMS, uh, crews are still doing some continuing education, but we're doing it by Zoom as well with Premier Health, well, they use something else. Uh, so we're able to log in with, uh, Premier Health. I've done twelve lead, you know, classes and some stroke and, and some hand injuries. Some really cool pictures. I wish I could have got some of the pictures from that doctor, the hand injuries. Uh, we've been trying to ascertain a lot of different. We've been trying to ascertain a lot of different supplies. Right now, I have these folded masks that you guys can use for these meetings, our surgical masks. We can't, we only have like three boxes left and we have to put those on every patient now. As things changed throughout with this COVID, we've had to change the way we handle patients. Chief Macter bought himself a three D printer. We print it off this part right here, this plastic part. This cover here was like in front of my urine report. We took some of the sheets and just hang around and it off and then we have the face shield that we're using out in the field as well. My sister-in-law did eighty of these masks for me. We also, this one doesn't have, this is one that she made for me originally. There's Velcro on the other ones. We can open them up and put HIPAA filters, HIPAA filters inside, so we can give us some extra protection as well. Those are our last resorts when we start running out of everything else. We have a few people complete the officer, one class, we've got one going on as officer two. Vehicle maintenance, there've been, the old chief's vehicle, got new brake pads, rotors, struts. We're still working on an issue with the brake line, but hopefully we'll get that resolved here shortly. Replaced the battery in one of the medics, changed the oil in universal joint drive on the truck that Grady's using, because it was hanging pretty hard, so we used a thirty-five dollar part, so we replaced that. Quartermaster, Chief Wilcox, he's in his new office now, so he has most of his uniforms in there. He's got, anytime we hire somebody or replace anything, he has pants, shirts, T-shirts. He has it all, a lot of it in his office. I T, we put all new individual profiles back into the one computer that we put here. We put a new computer, all the computers from that side of the building have moved over here. So they come over here, do their run reports. There's a lock box to put their run reports in when they're completed or any documentation they get from the hospital. We also have a computer in there which shows the active nine-one-one. Anytime a call goes out, so we can watch one of the, an older TV screen that we had with the computer. Fire prevention, they put a smoke detector on Vanguard because of the fire from the other day. So we haven't really been doing any inspections because of the pandemic, we haven't been out in the public. Under H R, we did payroll, personnel files. We've got three people to interview, two medics and one E M T firefighter. Just trying to figure a way to get them in here to do this, you know, going through this process. Completed a B W C claim from an injury from the structure fire. He was, he was released and put back into service. We just got our two thousand seventeen, thousand, yeah, two thousand seventeen desktop review. They come back completed. So, so far we're up to date with FEMA and all of our grants. Right now, we're in a waiting process to see what happens with our grants that we have in. And then there's possibility of getting some FEMA grant money for the COVID supplies that Mr. Wolfe talked about.